All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this hearing to order for those intending in person or on Zoom who are in need of interpretation, who speak Mandarin, Arabic, or Spanish. Live translation services are available, and if you're here in person, please go to the registration desk to request a headset. If you're tuning in through Zoom, please select the appropriate language channel on your Zoom. I'd now like to call up the interpreters to make the same announcement in the appropriate languages. Just give us a second.
Buenas tardes. Espero que todos estén bien. Tenemos servicio de interpretación en español y en otros idiomas, idiomas del español, ¿cierto? ¿Se están oyendo? Entonces, si lo necesitan, por favor, pídanlo. Está disponible. Es interpretación simultánea y también consecutiva. Les voy a decir el nombre de este evento. Esta es la Comisión de la Ciudad de Nueva York para fortalecer la democracia local, ¿ok? Es una audiencia pública aquí en la librería de Brooklyn, en Sunset Park. Muchas gracias.
All right. Thank you to all the interpreters here. Hard work. So good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. My name is Manny Pastreich. I'm the president of SCIU Local 32BJ and have the honor of being the acting chair of this commission. We also have one of our chairs, Arva Rice, on Zoom. So thank you, Arva, for giving me this responsibility. I would also like to thank Aaron Soriano, Roxana Benavides, and the staff of the Sunset Park Library for hosting us this evening. If we give them a round of applause, thanks. Tonight, we will continue our final round of public hearings taking place in all five boroughs. These hearings have furthered our efforts to solicit proposals from policy experts and the public on substantial effective amendments to the city charter. The charter is our city's foundational document. Because the charter plays a vital role in establishing the structure, procedures of city government, it shapes how decisions are made on a wide range of issues affecting everyday New Yorkers. This commission has been impaneled to conduct a thorough review of the charter and craft proposals to be put before the voters. This is our chance to create a better functioning city, one that's more transparent in its activities and more accountable to the people. It is an opportunity to make changes to ensure our city is less vulnerable to manipulation, corruption, or fraud. I know that all of my colleagues take this responsibility very seriously. While this commission was convened by a local law passed by the city council, we are an independent body, regardless of the merits of any proposal that can be achieved by local law, will likely not be up for consideration. The commission will not consider any proposals that weaken local democracy or New Yorkers' rights. Following our second round of hearings, the commission staff produced an updated set of recommendations for the commission. These recommendations focus on three policy areas: government accountability, budget transparency, and land use. Our final round of hearings also concentrate in these areas, with each hearing covering one area. Tonight, we will focus in on the testimony on land use. I'll conclude with a couple notes on our process. First, we are not the only commission meeting to review the charter. This commission is distinct from the Charter Revision Commission convened by the mayor. Both commissions are working simultaneously but separately. Second, in the final days of this year's New York State Legislative Session, the Assembly and Senate passed legislation that would prevent mayoral proposals from bumping any other charter amendment from the ballot. This is pending the governor's signature. Our proposals would appear on the November ballot alongside those of the mayor's commission if signed. So with that, I will say that Harry Isaiah Black is joining us today as counsel, so thank you. And I'll ask the members of the commission to briefly introduce themselves. We'll start with those in the room today.
Hi, everyone. I'm Andrea Salwen-Copel. I am the executive director of National Council of Jewish Women in New York, and I was appointed by Speaker Adams.
Good afternoon. Good evening, I'm Rod Jones.
Good evening. I'm Alan Swisher, appointed by Queensborough President Donovan.
We'll go to Zoom, Arva. You're still muted, I think.
Good evening. I'm Arva Rice, and I'm the co-chair of the commission.
Rahul.
Good evening, Rahul Legrowall, appointed by Mayor Adams.
Robert.
Good evening, Robert Maraglia, appointed by Bronx Board President Vanessa L. Gibson.
Dr. Raju.
Dr. Ram Raju, appointed by the St. Daryl Ball President.
And did I miss anyone? Okay. So we will now turn to the test. Sorry, did I miss something? Okay. We'll now turn to the testimony portion of tonight's agenda, which will focus on land use. One of the most urgent challenges facing New York City is our housing crisis. To address this crisis, our commission is considering proposals that would approach land use and planning equitably and holistically without weakening the voices of our city's many diverse communities. We have an updated set of recommendations. The commission staff outlines several ways the charter could improve transparency and accountability in the city's land use and planning processes. These include, number one, improving the community planning process in neighborhoods with limited affordable housing; second, directing key city agencies to create policies that promote equitable housing development; third, ensuring community boards demonstrate how they plan to meet local housing targets in their annual statement; creating a higher threshold for the city planning commission to deny neighborhood rezoning applications that are supported by community boards and borough presidents; and lastly, revising how the city evaluates its own acquisitions of office space and private buildings. The commission is grateful for those who've joined us today to reflect on these ideas and share any others they might have. Before hearing testimony, I remind those in attendance that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum must always be observed. As such, audience members shall remain silent at all times. If you intend to testify today but have not yet registered to do so, we will accept registrations up to the first 30 minutes of tonight's hearing. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. Video recordings or photography are not allowed. It's from the witness stand. At tonight's hearing, we will ask folks to limit their testimony to three minutes. And I think we have over 20 people signed up, so we're really going to try and hold to our three minutes. I will let you know when your time is up, and we'll try and give you a little warning before that as well. While tonight's hearing focuses on land use, we welcome any testimony on proposed revisions to the charter. I'm going to call witnesses up in panels. Commissioners are encouraged to ask questions based on testimony given, but I ask that the commissioners hold their questions until each member of the panel has testified. And finally, I ask that our witnesses and commissioners speak directly into their mics so that Zoom attendees and the interpreters can clearly hear you. So I think for panel one, we have Winsy Tao. Again, please introduce yourself before beginning your testimony and limit your statement to three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Winsy Tao. I'm a community advocate in the office of Councilmember Alexa Avilas, and I'm going to be reading on her behalf an abbreviated version of the full remarks, which will be submitted to the commissioners. When we talk about the ULR process and zoning changes, we're talking about changing people's homes, lives, histories, and trying to build a better future. The city council has a say in that process because we're able to speak to the deeply rooted concerns and interests of our neighbors and homes. Frankly, the mayor and his administration have different interests and goals in the land use process. They have to pay attention to the bottom line, increasing city revenue and appealing to their big real estate supporters. That means more often than not, throwing neighborhoods like ours and Red Hook under the bus. This Charter Revision Commission has the opportunity to give more people, to give more power to the city council, which in turn gives more power to the people. Shutting city council out of the ULR process shuts down people's access to representation in the process. What we should be doing is proactively educating New Yorkers on land use to increase engagement in these processes. This city council has approved dozens of land use applications since 2022, totaling 120,000 units of housing. This includes 28,777 units from private applications, 16,336 units, or 57% of which are affordable homes. This level of affordability would not have been achieved without the city council's role in ULRP, which affected council members advocating for greater affordability of the approved housing. In fact, no one has more interest in increasing affordable housing than us. So we must ensure that the working-class people of our city are able to keep their voices in this process. We can't let the people of our city get removed from the ULR process and replaced by big real estate. It would only make our city more expensive, and it will hurt the systems of democracy that protect us most. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll start with the commissioner. Please, if you could just... You're welcome to stay. We may have some questions. But let me just check. Does anyone... Nope. Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Okay, you are. Thank you for your testimony. All right. We are now going to call up a panel of three people: Howard Slatkin, Christopher Casey, and Tara Dubea. Yep, I will let Rachel introduce herself. Any one of you can start.
Good evening, commission. I am Howard Slatkin, Executive Director of Planning Council. Over two decades with the Department of City Planning, in roles ranging from community planner to responsibility for citywide policy. My testimony this evening will draw from that personal work experience, and I want to express my appreciation for this commission's inquiry into planning processes, which are related to but different from land use decision processes. Community planning is an inherently collaborative process. To be effective requires local perspectives and broader city policy objectives to be brought together and reconciled. This process can be challenging, and it takes different shapes in different communities. But it can be very productive, particularly when alignment can be achieved for objectives for the process. The community planning processes established decades ago in the charter have proven too rigid and too far removed from ongoing decision-making processes of government. Communities, elected officials, and agencies have forged new processes that have had successes, but certainly can continue to be improved. The charter can assign authority among the often rivalrous organs of local government and provide mechanisms for accountability, but it's not a very good vehicle for flexibility or nimbleness, nor can it mandate collaboration or good intentions. For this reason, I think the commission's focus on community planning should look toward transparency to promote accountability and alignment with fair housing goals. The Fair Housing Framework that has been established by the city council... As long as everyone can hear. The Fair Housing Framework provides an important tool to remedy longstanding inequities in housing production that have in many cases been reinforced by the city's land use processes. Asking community boards to reference the housing production targets assigned to them through this Fair Housing Framework would be a sensible addition to the community district statement of needs. Prompting community boards to recommend strategies to meet these needs is also sensible. This provides an opportunity to seek alignment with the Strategic Equity Framework that the Fair Housing Framework requires the city to issue periodically about the types of actions that are necessary to achieve the goals of the Fair Housing. So I think those are good ideas. I want to touch on another topic the commission is considering. I would discourage the idea of establishing a higher threshold for the city planning commission to deny applications supported by community boards and borough presidents. While this may be intended as a way to aid productive neighborhood planning initiatives, it would more directly grease the skids for exclusionary downzones. As CHPC has detailed in our report, unplanned shrinkage, available on our website. During the early 2000s, a total of 87 neighborhood downzonings decreased the amount of land available for low-density multifamily housing by 37%, often rendering any new housing whatsoever impossible. Downzonings were driven by strong community board and borough president support, but contributed enormously to the disparities that necessitated the Fair Housing Framework and the City of Yes and City for All actions more recently. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to submit testimony. My name is Tara Duvie. I'm senior planner at the Pratt Center for Community Development, which has been working since 1963 to create a more just, equitable, and sustainable city through participatory planning, applied research, and policy advocacy, and collaboration with community-based organizations. Pratt Center is also a member of the Thriving Communities Coalition, TCC, a citywide movement comprising of more than 15 grassroots organizing, advocacy, policy, and technical assistance groups that are working for a more equitable, participatory, and comprehensive approach to city planning. We are excited to see that this commission is pursuing strategies to strengthen fair housing and community planning in the city. We join our fellow members of TCC to testify today in support of revisions to the city charter to strengthen, democratize, and enforce the city's fair housing plan in support of comprehensive, community-based, and equitable planning goals. Specifically, TCC is calling on the commission to consider proposing amendments to the city charter to: A. Give the city council the authority to approve their housing plan's housing targets and require that community boards develop their own community land use plans to meet them. Democratic approval of the fair housing plan and community participation in its implementation will help ensure the city establishes equitable housing targets and meets them. B. Use the fair housing plan to guide land use planning and decision-making. While we understand that this commission is not considering changes to the land use review process, proposed charter commission... Oh, excuse me. Proposed charter revisions elsewhere could create a ULR fast track for some housing projects. We urge the commission to do everything in its power to ensure that any implemented ULR fast tracks apply solely to projects that meet the fair housing plan targets and prioritize deeply affordable housing in areas of need. And C. Better align the capital budget with fair housing plan goals and disclose what future investments are needed to reduce disparities across neighborhoods. These changes will increase transparency and accountability in the budget and planning process and provide resources community boards need in order to create land use plans. Taken together, these proposals would introduce strong steps towards the goal of comprehensive planning in our city. These proposals would establish equitable housing targets set by the city as required and guided by the fair housing plan, create a proactive process for communities to put forward their plans for how best to meet these targets, expedite affordable housing to support the fair housing plan and community plans, and provide transparency on the investments needed to implement, to make these plans a reality. This commission has an opportunity to improve our fair housing and community planning processes for a more just, equitable, and democratic city. At a time when policymakers are considering reforms to land use planning that would reduce transparency and community involvement, this commission's commitment to democracy is all the more important. We invite the commission to work with the Thriving Communities Coalition, which has spent years developing policy proposals to advance comprehensive planning, to discuss these proposals further. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to submit this testimony on behalf of the Thriving Communities Coalition. I am Christopher Casey. I am the senior campaigner for land use at ANHD. I'm actually the facilitator of the coalition, and so I'm so proud to have Tara next to me in this meeting. We're submitting this testimony on behalf of the TCC, a citywide movement of grassroots organizing, advocacy, policy, and technical assistance groups working across issue areas and neighborhoods. TCC's members are united in the belief that our current ad hoc approach to planning and land use in New York City does not effectively deliver for most New Yorkers, and that we need a meaningful reform to ensure that a more equitable distribution of development and investment truly to overcome inequality, exclusion, and displacement. TCC has long called for comprehensive planning reform here in New York City. We believe that such an approach can better align and coordinate existing plans while centering racial, economic, health, and climate equity alongside intentional and representative community engagement to help build trust and achieve fair, more informed, and more democratic decisions and outcomes citywide in our neighborhoods. While we understand that this commission might not be prepared to advance a full comprehensive planning proposal at this time, we believe that this is still an opportunity to advance our key components and outcomes of comprehensive planning by aligning land use and budget decisions to achieve the targets set by the fair housing plan. We're heartened that this commission has indicated an interest in this approach already, particularly around strengthening community planning for better response time and to advance the fair housing plan targets. TCC asked this commission to strengthen and build upon the fair housing plan by amending the charter in simply three ways. We outlined a few of it here. Those would be, first, align housing production with equity by using ULR and fast tracks to solely project the meet... to projects that meet the fair housing plan targets and prioritize deeply affordable housing in areas of need. The second thing we would like to do is center, as you said, democratic participation by giving the city council the authority to approve the fair housing plan targets and requiring that the communities develop their own community plans to meet them, to meet the actual targets themselves. And then, third, ensure transparency and accountability by better aligning the capital budget with the fair housing plan and goals, and to disclose what future investments are needed to reduce disparities across neighborhoods. To conclude, we believe these reforms are not only feasible, but at this time, they are absolutely necessary. They reflect the growing consensus across our city meaningfully addressed through piecemeal rezoning, top-down planning, and housing production alone. We need a process rooted in democracy, clear obligations, and neighborhood equity. As organizations and individuals committed to equity, to justice, and to community power, we urge this charter commission to adopt the recommendations of this coalition and advance amendments to our city's governing charter that make comprehensive, equitable planning around the fair housing plan a foundational principle of our city's land use system. It would be a huge reform and a victory for this people in this city who work here if we could do this together. Thank you so much for your time, your consideration, and I will accept your questions again.
Thank you. Let me see if there are questions.
Oh, sorry. That helped a bit. Talk a little bit about the dynamics between the cities that are implementing.
I mean, is this under the theoretical framework or as...
But in practicality, I know Sunset Park has gone through different city planning that's been very obvious, very public. I see Elizabeth over there who's led, you know, so many fights. So I'm interested in hearing, you know, what are the tensions, what are the dynamics between the community and city planning?
I mean, I haven't worked in city planning, but at least from my perspective as someone who was a planner, who has worked for the Manhattan Borough President for a number of years and has gone through many ULR processes and also participated in community planning, I think a lot of it is just lack of clear power in terms of like whether or not the community's plans are heard. I know something that we're talking about or is being considered is figuring out how we can reintroduce this idea of doing 197A plans, but these are not binding. So to have the communities... You know, they're looking at data, they're actively planning, they're actively participating. But in the end, there's a great plan that really just ends up on the shelf where there's nothing binding, to me, is the issue. And a lot of it has, you know, this is why I think our coalition has been working since 2018 to introduce comprehensive planning to really provide not only something more binding for communities to be able to like put their hat on and have some sort of guarantee that some of this or all of it will move forward, but then also provide the resources for them to do the planning that they want to do. We work at Pratt Center. We do provide a lot of technical assistance to community organizations because they don't have that access. And we are only a very... You know, there's only two planners on staff, and we do as much as we can. But there are so many communities right now who are experiencing the need to address either responses to planned rezonings, things of that sort, and don't lack, and the lack of the resources because of the way our current planning structure is set up.
Sort of take turns. And I'll provide a perspective from somebody who was involved in community planning, including some of the Sunset Park 197A plan a long time ago. I think there are a lot of sources of frustration, certainly. I think there have been good collaborations. I think there is less capacity to undertake big initiatives than there might be a desire for, right? Like, there are more communities who would like to see a plan done in a timely way in their neighborhood than there are resources to do those plans. Is... I'm not necessarily speaking about the present moment, but over the long term. I think this question... I want to get back to the question of sort of what's binding and what's not, and sort of what the role of planning is versus the role of other formal city decision processes, and that is complicated. But I think that the biggest challenge is typically in this process that I mentioned of reconciling local ideas, perspectives, priorities with citywide policies and resource availability. There's not, there are not resources made available specifically for a community plan. If you want to see a capital project in your neighborhood, that is part of a larger capital planning process, which is... You know, there's not a simple way to initiate that or attach that to this sort of local community planning process. That's been a major source of frustration. I remember going through 197A plan documents and like having to go back and forth with the community and say like, "Well, seek resources to do the following," right? And this ended up being the preface to so many of the recommendations, but so much of it is about resources and official decision processes. I would say about the, about 197A plans or other plans being binding or not. To me, it's... There's a... I think there's often a kind of an illusory nature to the idea of a binding plan because democracy is about the people who are in office today getting to make decisions that they were elected to make, right? It's about today's decision-makers being brought choices and making decisions because that's their job, their responsibility, and their prerogative. Planning often, you know, the idea of a binding plan is often the idea that we're going to somehow tie the hands of future office holders to make the decisions that we want to make today. Even the decision might come before them sometime in the future. And that is, there's a tension in that that's very difficult to resolve because you do want to have plans that have coherent goals and priorities that survive over time. And that usually requires a lot of political effort and activism from neighborhoods and communities to keep their priorities alive through their elected officials as they change. And that is a difficult part of the process. But I would just say that connecting planning initiatives more closely to the decision processes they're intended to inform has been part of this solution. Like, when I mentioned that officials and agencies and communities have taken a different approach than 197A planning, one approach has been to focus on maybe just the land use piece of it, which is incomplete, which is not all the things that you need to plan for, but it's something that connects to a decision process and can be launched and can be advanced. And then, at the end of it, you've done your land use changes. It's not as holistic as other plans or planning processes would be, but it's a way to connect those decisions more closely rather than to write up a plan, come back in a few years, some changes in the cast of characters, and you end up with a different result than you might have expected. So that's my, some of my lessons that I've drawn from.
Yeah, and just one thing I would just say to that is like, I don't think that we are... At least, we at TCC are not arguing for sort of like these rigid plans that can never change and, you know, sticking, you know, they're in the stone forever, like no one's... You know, we're not asking for a table of commandments, right? you know, we're not asking for a table of commandments, right? What we're asking for is a flexibility to both like create a plan and then have the core elements of those targets, whatever those targets are, if it's a number of housing, a number of affordable housing, like whatever it is, and then give communities the flexibility to like meet those targets in the ways that make sense for them. And so I think we get to the, to the, sort of the debates that we have had, and I see this from the perspective as an organizer, like of nothing is binding, you put us through these processes, we create these plans, and then they don't ever go anywhere, right? And this way, by having targets that the city has and that the city council has to agree upon for like up to a decade, and then giving communities flexibility to meet those targets, I think helps get to that issue where I think we have these constant conflicts over planning versus the organizing versus the community versus the agencies. In this way, I think we're able to solve. In some, I'm not going to say it's going to solve everything, but it's going to solve, I think, a lot of the bottlenecks that we continue to have in this debate around housing and housing production.
Thank you for your testimony. My question is in a pragmatic way. So we do housing development, right? And so there's this real tension between this notion of equitable distribution and then the cost and availability of things like land. So for example, doing a project on the Upper West Side, like trying to meet the base number of acquisition is already so far from what the city is going to invest in that by default you end up in places where there are much more vacant land, and then you can meet the base acquisition. So bridge for me a little bit between any kind of statutory number we might put in place and the resourcing of that, if that makes sense.
You mean a number for housing?
Right, for housing.
Like hard housing targets? I mean, I'm not going to claim to be the expert on that. I mean, that is something I would refer to like HPD and DCP to work, and I think that's really why we're introducing this idea of it being a more democratic, open process so we could, you know, taking into account land costs and other factors. So I can't really, I don't want to say, oh, hey, you know, we need to just, you know, here's a number, this is the number. I mean, I used to work, I used to work in housing development on the Upper West Side, and, you know, granted, that was like 10, 15 years ago, but there were still parcels that we were getting from the city for a dollar. I do believe ultimately like public land should be 100%, consist of 100% affordable units. We need to figure, you know, there are things that need to be, that can come into play that can adjust how and what, you know, how we hit certain targets in certain areas. I did also just kind of want to go back to your question, Joanne. I know that there are communities, I think there's this general idea that communities don't want to see housing development, they don't want to see more development. I do think that a lot of communities, even ones that are generally smaller, I mean, we've worked with them, have an understanding that their neighborhoods are changing, they have children, they may own their home, they have their children who cannot afford to purchase or even rent in their neighborhoods, and would like to figure out ways to accommodate for that, whether it be providing some density in certain areas, whether it be legalizing basement apartments, things of that sort. But when you have other communities who are seeing neighborhoods really basically getting thousands and thousands of units at one shot, I understand why, and, you know, we have to understand that there's just a general distrust that communities have of the government. So really us, this like coming up with this idea of doing something more comprehensive and binding to a degree, at least, you know, again, taking into what Christopher said, you know, having these, understanding these like specific goals, tenants that we know are kind of immovable, whether, you know, such as affordable housing, proper infrastructure to accommodate for those things, schools, things of that sort. I don't see it as just being something that is, that would really stifle planning over time. And especially what we, I mean, you all are not considering this, and neither is the other commission with comprehensive planning, but, you know, the way we built in our framework was also to incorporate, you know, opportunities to look back, make adjustments, make changes. So we're definitely not thinking that we just set a plan, one comprehensive plan to last us for the rest of our days. But again, I'm sorry, like long-winded to your answer, but I do think, I mean, part of doing this process would really have to be something in, you know, with using data, talking to community groups, talking with HPD, talking to DCP, understanding what the land availability is of public land, thinking through all these other different factors to come up with these adequate targets. And then again, through this voting process, really making sure that these are realistic and feasible.
I don't think I can give you like the most direct answer here. What I can say is, to some degree, the debate between sort of equity and housing production, to me, sometimes feels like a false one, okay? We need to deal with gentrification and displacement. It is not okay for people to be displaced from their homes that they have lived in for years simply because other people want cheaper housing. At the same time, we need to try to build more housing, right? So that we start to, right? We need to do both. And so I don't think I have the answer here, but for me, it's less about, we get to part of this solution by coming up, like as a city, coming to an agreement about how much production we want, which is sort of the key thing we're trying to say here, and then giving the communities a democratic approach to be able to meet them in their own way. And the ones and the things that are, you know, we're saying if they're, you know, if they're particularly 100% affordable or, you know, meet the Fair Housing Plan, those things get expedited first, that's not going to get to the cost issue, right? But I think it will start to at least clarify for the market sort of where our housing production is going to go, where we're going to do, how are we going to resolve the infrastructure issues? And then we can solve the rest of the other problems in other ways. But to me, it's like, we have, we have to get to a place where we can build more space and do that collaboratively and democratically. It won't solve the cost issue completely because I don't think we can, like this plan is not going to deal with, you know, union costs, right? Like that's not going to, that's another thing we're going to need to do, but at least let's get to a place where we agree every five or eight, 10 years, we're going to build X number of housing, we're going to have communities do it together in terms of meeting those targets, and then hopefully that builds the type of political capital we need to force the city and the national government to get more serious about helping us build more space. Because I don't think, again, we have to do both. We can't just keep going back and forth in this debate about, well, we have to build more housing, but we're okay with gentrification. Like we have to do both. But I'm not, I don't, like I said, I'm not going to give you the answer, but my answer is, let's try to do something comprehensive, move the city forward, create the political environment where I think we have the will to then deal with the other issues that I think lead to the situation with sort of per-unit costs and all the problems that we have.
Add one note about the housing targets, which I think, the issues that you raise are real issues because there are different tools necessary and available to build affordable housing in different physical and market conditions, right? There are very few tools available to build 100% affordable housing, curing a site, covering the cost of land is like a threshold problem, right? Mixed income housing development through programs like, you know, the tax incentive programs that provide for mixed income housing is probably going to be something that, that an area like that needs to lean on. I have, I think that there's a, there's a level, housing targets are a good thing because they're a marker that you aim for and you keep on pushing towards, but they're not, I think they have to be treated as, you know, important and directional rather than quotas because we don't control the flow of capital into different neighborhoods and the rate at which housing can be built. What we can do is see where it's been sufficient, where it's been insufficient, and where you need to dial it up because it's been insufficient, and where you might need to do something special because you don't have a lot of other resources. Many, many, I don't know how many people in this room, but many people in every room that I walk into are deeply pained at the cancellation of the Haven Green project in Soho-NoHo this past week as an unique and perhaps irreplaceable opportunity to build 100% affordable housing in a neighborhood where land costs are otherwise completely prohibitive. I think the existence of a fair housing framework would put a big red exclamation point on the necessity of using an opportunity like that in a way that would be helpful. It doesn't force that decision. We still have to hold decision makers accountable to meeting those goals and targets, and that's what the process is for. But the function of a fair housing framework and all these planning mechanisms that I think we're all talking about in different ways is to focus attention on what is it we have to do in each of these situations and how can we directionally move those choices?
Question for this panel, Alan.
That's a lot of pressure on me. My question is specifically for Mr. Slackin relating to something he brought up in his testimony. So with respect to the staff's recommendation to raise the threshold for CPC to go down a ULEP application that's been recommended both by community boards and the borough president, it sounds from your testimony that you appreciate and understand the intent behind that? I think so, yeah. I would like to know whether you had any thoughts about whether there was a way to tweak or improve that particular recommendation to maintain that goal of sort of, you know, putting our, not putting your finger on the scale necessarily, but making things easier without, with avoiding those unintended consequences.
That's a great question. One thought I have on that subject is this, I cannot think of, off the top of my head, and I'd have to think harder, of applications that the City Planning Commission has voted down that borough presidents and community boards have support. I don't think it's a problem, you know, right? You know, I think that the way that, the way that projects enter the process, it is not, not as, it's not that it never happens. I think that city-initiated applications are generally approved by the planning commission because this planning commission has a, the staff to the planning commission have a role in developing proposals, not uniquely and not without modification, and then there's other, you know, then there's the city council process. My thing that I had focused on in our research on this was instances where, you know, the sort of blockade of an individual city council member who uses the privilege of member deference to say, don't even bother bringing your application in my neighborhood because I'm going to take it down. You don't, you shouldn't even waste your time. You're going to just spend years and lots of money and it's going to end badly, so don't even bother. And there's an unknown number of deferred projects that go through that process. And I think the challenge there, and this is something that I, you know, I've spoken to the other active commission about, is that you don't want, you know, there is a function for each of these participants in the process, and they give voice to communities, they give voice to, you know, the city council has a, as a very significant role in the process, and you don't want to ignore that. But you also want to avoid capture of what's supposed to be a citywide body, the city council that's supposed to reflect citywide deliberation by an individual member. There's a, there's a role for a local input and there's a role for sort of citywide vote. And the whole challenge and the whole balance is, how do you bring the local together with the citywide in a productive way? And it's not, it's not easy, it's not a simple formula, but I don't, one of the suggestions that I had in that process was that a borough president could essentially sort of initiate an appeal process at the end of the process because a borough president might say that it's very important that this application advance, right? Some way to do that. It's in some ways, and the current charter has in this, what they call the triple no process, which is the idea that, you know, there would be an automatic call-up to the city. It has, it's proved to sort of not be significant, but what I was looking for is what we, and I think what you're gesturing at is what I would call a triple yes, which is, it's, we know how no works in the process, but how can you, you know, use that level of local support to sort of buoy something that's helpful? And I think my concern is that there are things that are popular that don't add up to the city's overall interest, and I, and reconciling that is a hard part of the process.
All right. Thank you all. That was all very helpful testimony. For our third panel, we will call up Naime Dahir, Jorge Paz Reyes, and Angela Zhou. Again, please speak into the mic, introduce yourselves in whichever order you.
Juan, good afternoon. My name is Pedro Reyes. I'm the community organizer for Misteca. We are a Sunset Park-based community organization dedicated to empowering the Latinx immigrant community of the city of New York.
Please speak right into the mic, sorry. You can bring it closer, yeah.
I'm here today to go as strong support for the commission's proposal, especially those that strengthen community planning, promote equitable housing, and increase land use accountability. These proposals speak directly to the longstanding challenges of our neighborhood that our neighborhood has faced. Before I continue, I want to acknowledge the leadership of organizations such as Upros that I've presented with, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and tenant organizers such as now Assembly Member Marcela Mietanis. Their advocacy has laid groundwork for ensuring that community voices are central in decisions about land use and redevelopment here in Sunset Park. As many as you know, Sunset Park has seen their wave after wave of gentrification. We've seen rents skyrocket, families being displaced, small businesses being pushed out. Projects like Industry Cities brought big promises but very little benefit and has reached very little people with actual work. This experience made one thing clear, and that is that local voices must be prioritized when it comes to planning decisions. At Misteca, we work every day with community members facing eviction, job losses, and displacement, all worsened by resounding decisions made without real community input or accountability. That is why we support the commission's proposals to raise the threshold for city planning commissions to override land use applications that are supported by community boards or borough presidents. We also support requiring community boards to include district-specific housing targets as this promotes shared responsibility, transparency, and planning that reflects actual community needs. Lastly, mandating city planning and city planning commission to actively promote equitable housing development is not only appropriate, but it's urgent. Sunset Park is a frontline community in the fighting for affordability and against displacement. Equity must be fundamental principle in how we plan our community. Thank you for your time and thank you for the opportunity to give me a space.
Hi, everyone. Angela Zhao, I'm with Upros, and today I'll be giving this testimony on behalf of Osvaldo Garcia, who is our regenerative economies coordinator at Upros. He's not feeling well today. And for those who don't know, Upros is the oldest Latino community-based organization in Brooklyn, rooted in Sunset Park since 1966. We have evolved into an intergenerational, multiracial, matriarchal, grassroots organization working at the intersection of racial justice and climate change. And as you all know, Sunset Park is home to one of New York City's largest significant maritime industrial areas and the second-largest industrial business zone. This neighborhood has powered the city's industrial economy for generations, but has also carried the burden of disproportionate pollution exposure as well as environmental justice of public disinvestment. Now, what remains of Sunset Park's industrial waterfront is being sold off to outside interests as a community vision is being co-opted and repurposed. And once its vital working-class employment base is replaced by high-tech jobs and infrastructure that doesn't need, serve the needs of frontline New Yorkers, it's gone for good. The Green Resilient Industrial District, or GRIT 2.0, is a community-driven operational plan shaped over more than a decade by frontline residents, workers, and planners who have lived with the consequences of extractive development. GRIT 2.0 must serve as the North Star for the city's approach to planning and development in Sunset Park. It lays out a comprehensive roadmap with 31 objectives that center on transforming our industrial waterfront into a hub for regenerative green manufacturing, circular economy practices, sustainable infrastructure, and worker-centered innovation. Excluding the GRIT 2.0 from this process would be disregarding the communities that have defined Sunset Park for generations. The city's ongoing climate innovation hub, now known as Batworks at the Brooklyn Army Terminal, exemplifies how not to engage frontline communities. Sadly, EDC has decided to again pursue a top-down approach, making key decisions without transparency, shifting timelines without explanation, and withholding vital materials while privileging out-of-state institutions with no local track record. This process is remarkably similar to the challenges our community faced when fighting against Industry City's proposed rezoning. We cannot repeat development strategies that elevate private capital over public accountability, especially in a working-class neighborhood like Sunset Park. While communities across New York are already capitalizing on the clean energy transition to secure thousands of good-paying, homegrown, green jobs, any industrial strategy here that fails to center racial, environmental, and economic justice from the outset will only replicate harm and leave our communities behind. Accordingly, we strongly urge the New York City Commission to strengthen local democracy to prioritize the codifying of community planning initiatives that not only speak to housing production, but also local economies as part of its work. We also ask the commission to formally recognize and incorporate the GRIT 2.0 into its staff recommendations and encourage the creation of a special purpose district in Sunset Park. District would pair a targeted incentive overlay, including tax credits and streamlined permitting, with a comprehensive retooling of the underlying land use regulations, ensuring that every new project advances community-led climate resilience. that every new project advances community-led climate resilience, good-paying, green jobs, and equitable development. The commission can help challenge the top-down development practices of EDC and ensure that future industrial and climate infrastructure proposals city-wide are measured against standards born of frontline expertise by elevating the GRIT 2.0 to charter-level policy.
That would be.
Yeah. Now is the moment to shift power and resources back to the residents, back to workers, and back to small businesses who have stewarded Sunset Park for decades to ensure a truly just transition.
Good afternoon, chairs. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, chairs and commissioners. My name is Naime Dahir, and I'm here on behalf of the Arab American Family Support Center, which provides culturally and linguistically competent, trauma-informed, multi-generational social services to New York City's growing Arab, Middle Eastern, North African, Muslim, and South Asian communities. We offer holistic support, including legal assistance, mental health counseling, domestic violence intervention, public benefit, and housing navigation and resource distribution. For many families, we're the only trusted source resource available to help navigate systems not built with them in mind. We are honored to join today's conversation on fair housing and community planning. AAFSC strongly supports proposed charter revisions that would strengthen the fair housing framework and ensure community plans carry real weight. Community feedback must be the starting point, not an afterthought in shaping decisions that impact our neighborhoods. The affordable housing crisis in New York City disproportionately affects communities we serve. Survivors of domestic violence and domestic and gender-based violence often face impossible choices between staying in unsafe situations or risking homelessness. Others come to us with renting worries in thousands resulting from already unaffordable housing. Housing is the number one concern we hear from our clients. While we've hired a housing navigator, they even face barriers accessing public benefits and emergency support to support our clients. Temporary assistance can only go so far in a fundamentally broken system. To address this meaningfully, we need equitable, community-led housing planning. Long been excluded from these, key barriers include the lack of disaggregated data that reflects their needs and limited language access that prevents participation in civic life. At the same time, our communities are navigating a climate of heightened fear due to xenophobic rhetoric and punitive immigration policies. Many clients, especially survivors, are reluctant to seek help, fearing deportation or family separation. Some forego benefits like food assistance over concerns of data shading, data shade sharing with federal agencies. Trusted community-based organizations like AAFSC are stepping up, but we can't do this alone. We need policies that value the lived experiences and hold agencies accountable to the communities they serve. We support reform of the community planning process that would make it more accessible and responsive, allowing community boards to actively shape the futures of their neighborhoods. We also support requiring the Department of City Planning to conduct neighborhood studies in areas contributing their fair share, not contributing their fair short housing production. But these efforts must be generally community-led and not performative. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. If there's any questions here on Zoom, do we have any? So I would just ask if there was one area that each of you would like to see changed, particularly with related charter, or if more generally that you think is like the biggest problem, what you would like to see addressed in terms of housing production?
I was providing the charter revisions and recommendations. I thought it was really interesting, this dynamic between, you know, having city planning, preventing city planning, and having a higher threshold for City Planning Commission to override land use applications supported by both community boards and Borough Presidents. Because right now, Mistica, and for context, a lot of community members do not really understand the process of CEO, although this process is very complicated and obscure. So like, we're trying to like, you know, civically engage them in their community boards. So this specific area was really interesting for us. And it's really interesting also to hear all the experts here how that plays out in reality and where are those dynamics. I think in paper right now, everything looks pretty well for the community, and it's something that we can report back to them that this is what the charter is doing, and we're investigating how this is playing out in reality.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thing, but I think just thinking more generally about our communities that we serve, many of them are they lack the information to understand what is in our charters or the different like language access tools to be able to really communicate with their neighbors about what they think is best for their community. So I think just like making an effort to make things a little bit more understandable and really tapping into language access specifically to make sure that everyone in the room is aware and has an active part in shaping major decisions that affect their daily lives.
So Elizabeth Yom Pierre, our executive director, is actually going to be the one
I need to respond. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, we're good. We're good. Gracias. First, we would want you not to eliminate deference to our city council members because we think that's tremendously important. And then, second, declaring this neighborhood a special purpose district and operationalizing the grid is tremendously important. And you may not see the connection between what we're proposing and housing, but there is a connection. The plans to take an industrial sector and not bring in green manufacturing, not to address climate adaptation, resiliency, and mitigation, and bring in the kinds of jobs that will make this livable community contribute to massive displacement of both residents and to small businesses. And so there is a connection. It's about retaining industri the industrial sector, repurposing it to address what you felt this week, which is extreme heat, particularly thinking about it. I think this council needs to really think about the political moment that we're in right now. We are in a moment where we are seeing funding taken away from federal programs that serve our community. And so all we have is decisions that are made locally, and engaging communities locally means supporting community-based plans. Sunset Park has a community-based plan that took 12 years to create. It is comprehensive. It has tons of recommendations, and they're not just aspirational, they are operational. And the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act from the state of New York makes it possible to move resources to make those things operational. What is missing is the political will and EDC's lack of accountability to make sure that these things happen. As we are fighting for an industrial sector that has a long history of harming us to start serving the needs of the local community, the region, and the state, that land is being given to the real estate market. And so EDC, instead of creating the market, is following the market. And we need to create a market that is going to serve local, current, and future needs. And so I just want to make sure that when you're thinking about this, if you're not thinking about climate change, you're thinking about housing, you're not thinking about anything. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but we are dealing with extreme heat. We are dealing with extreme events that are recurrent and unpredictable in a climate where every environmental protection has been deregulated and has been by February. So even the people in housing are going to be impacted. The industrial front is not. And so we're you don't support that as well. I don't know if you have any other questions, but I wanted to make sure that you understand that big visions that come from local communities are operational. I was also surprised that you had three young people here of color, and the only one asking the question was the chair. That was kind of disappointing because we were intentional about making sure that you know that leadership looks like what you had before you about five minutes ago.
Oh, are you ready for me to testify?
Sorry, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry, I couldn't hear. Great. Well, I just want to thank the chairs, Chair Grito, Chair Rice, for your leadership, and all of the members of the commission for your thoughtful commitment. You know, with the passage in the Senate and Assembly of Senator Kruger and Assembly Member Simone's legislation, the work of this commission got a lot more important very quickly. And I'm hopeful that Governor Hochul will sign this legislation into law. I was proud to sponsor a resolution in the City Council in support of that legislation that will allow for competing charter revision commissions to all put ideas forward to the ballot for New Yorkers to decide how we can make our city government more fair and more equitable. And appreciate very much your focus on strengthening local democracy and, you know, and I wanted to talk this evening about some of the policies that you're proposing around the city's leasing practices. You know, I've been deeply concerned about the city's real estate practices under the administration of Eric Adams. And, you know, as we all know, DCAST oversees a one and a half billion-dollar leasing portfolio, including nearly 400 leases totaling 22 million square feet. The city of New York is the largest employer in this in the city of New York, and DCAST makes enormously consequential financial decisions. Jesse Hamilton, one of Eric Adams' closest allies, has demonstrated that there are and and the work of DCAST under the Adams administration, they have demonstrated that there are not adequate safeguards in place to prevent corruption and abuse. The Adams administration inserted itself to hire a broker of their choosing with no commercial real estate experience and strong ties to the mayor. They attempted to shift a lease from a building that won a competitive selection process to a building owned by one of the mayor's donors. They filmed promotional videos for sites that the city budget office had not had already determined were not useful to meet the needs of the city of New York. It's clear that DCAST cannot be trusted to handle this responsibility alone, and we need more effective oversight and external review. I do appreciate that the commission is exploring options of the most effective way to ensure the lease is in the best interest of the city of New York, and our city agencies have the space that they need to serve New Yorkers. I think the DCP's role in this in the leasing process hasn't made sense. Bringing in another agency is important. If you ultimately choose to to bring the Controller's Agent Office in, you know, I would just be sure that they have a opportunity to provide meaningful oversight, to make recommendations, but the the dynamics between the mayor and the controller historically are always at loggerheads. And, you know, the controller can prevent a contract from being registered, and then the mayor can deem it. So if you were to to give the controller a direct oversight role here, I do think that the mayor's office should ultimately have the ability to override it to meet the space needs of their agencies, even if there are there are political differences between the office of the mayor and the controller. And just on one other proposal, I just want to in 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 your most recent report, I just would like to note, I really do appreciate your update to updated proposal to require the mayor to hold a public hearing 90 days after the declaration of a state of emergency and every 120 days thereafter. I hope that the council can play a role in this process as well to ensure that we have an opportunity to question the mayor and his agencies under oath on the necessity of the emergency orders and their intended purpose. As this commission knows well, but I don't think enough of the public does, on a variety of different topics, the mayor has issued an emergency executive order every five days for three-plus years at Rikers and and relating to other parts of the management of government. And it's just wrong to me that he can circumvent and get around local laws because he determines there's an emergency and without without there being any oversight whatsoever or any other mechanism in our city charter to to stop it or at least hold him accountable and ask tough questions. So I'm I, you know, just want to say I'm grateful to the work of this commission. I'm grateful for your all's thoughtfulness. And if there are ways that me and my team can be of assistance to any of you as you work toward a final report and recommendations for what will appear on the ballot, please don't hesitate to let us know. Thank you so much. Happy to answer questions if you have.
Hey, councilmember, can you hear me? Our mics are being a little weird.
I can hear you. I can't really see you, though. So but your voice is clear.
Rachel, I'm Brad's for Brad's team. Hi, hello. So this is why I wanted to speak on this question. Okay, so I definitely hear you about the political challenges of having another elected official have the responsibility. But it also seems challenging for an agency to have it because, of course, the agencies are under the mayor. But then I and I but I do worry that if it's like the contract with the deeming, that it actually just makes the controller's review not that meaningful here. So just curious if you if it's if it's either going to be an agency that reports to the mayor or an elected official who may have conflict with the mayor, do you have a preference, I guess, and or is there a third option we haven't thought of?
It's a great question. Thank you for posing it, Rachel. And I I don't I haven't fully formulated the best recommendation for you, but I'm happy to circle back and do that. I do think that it's imperative that the mayor's office be able to secure necessary space for their agencies and allowing for another elected official to prevent that from happening, I think, is a could be could have could pose real concerns. I think that your point is fair, that mayors don't will will deem contracts as needed. But I think that there's, just to make the, you know, as an analogy, I think that most mayors are really try to avoid that whenever possible, try to work with the controller to get contracts registered, try and provide the best and most best case, try to make the best case that they can for why the contract should be approved. And they deem they they only deem contracts and take the, you know, potential political hit and blowback when it's really necessary. You know, maybe that's a Pollyanna-ish view, but I think it's it's broadly accurate. So that my inclination would be to if you're going to have a controller review, you give the mayor an override function of it as necessary, but, you know, one where the mayor would feel some political pain if they're making a controversial decision.
I think that's very right. I mean, I think in the particular case that may have prompted this with Commissioner Hamilton, like, I'm not actually sure that a review that is then overrivable would have helped anyone, but we are those are sort of extraordinary circumstances. So broadly, probably the right move.
Yeah, I think you're I mean, look, they did, we did get back when we had a different we had a different caliber of leadership at City Hall. You know, Deputy Mayor Torey Springer took on that review herself and was determining whether to move forward with that lease because we called for that and put the ball, you know, in her court and asked for her to do so. So, you know, I think that the but yes, if the if it ultimately was a question for for Mayor Adams, he would have overruled it and said he didn't care because it made his friends happy. So I hear you, but I think he if he had done that, it would have been with significant pluses. had done that, it would have been with significant political consequences. And, you know, that's, I think, the best you can do in that situation. And for the record, we still don't know what the the final outcome of that lease is, in case anyone was wondering.
Let me just see if there's any other question. No, on Zoom? Nope. All right. Council member, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate you taking the time.
Have a great evening and thank you all for your work.
We will now call up our fifth panel. We have Brian Pago, Pagoada, again, forgive me if I get the name wrong, Skylar Cummings and Carrie Butler. Oh, I believe Skylar's on Zoom, so we'll start with the folks in the room first and then we'll go to Zoom.
Good day, everyone. My name is Brian Pauwala. I'm a director organizing Church United for Housing. I'm here representing Cuff Church United for Housing. We've been in the community since 2009. We've been organizing our work path, our immigrant community and working class across New York City and fighting for housing immigration and also economic justice. This year, we serve about 25,000 New Yorkers throughout one-on-one housing applications, support, also financial literacy and trainings, and also refer to legal services for credit repair, immigration services. We support about 12 actors, 10 associations in Brooklyn. This year alone, we also have helped to navigate about 1,500 people, the housing process through Housing Connect, through our weekly, weekly tenant organizing and canvassing with the criminal community from the place displacement. Our advocacy most recently wins victory. It is the racial impact study legislation that we passed in the city council in 2001. And one of the most recently wins that we also pass is the rate app, which is going to eliminate broker's fee and and bill to move our tenants to home. Today, I'm a strong support to the fair, fair housing frame law. For too long, our decision for land use has been deeply creating segregation and also warning the housing crisis that we're seeing. We are seeing black and brown communities in our communities being displaced. This bill will introduce finally what should have been always in the heart of city planning, accountability and transparency and equity. The ratio study mandate, the requirement are early in meaningful community engagement, ensuring make sure housing alignment goes. And this law will center the need for people over profit, the vision that we have for our communities, a cuff that we serve, it is more than just policy, it is creating where they can live and try meaningful for safe, more inclusive and affordable neighborhoods, protecting against displacement and also culture erasing, a future where all New Yorkers, regardless of race, income and immigration status, can see themselves and live in a home that can meet their needs. On behalf of Church United for Fair Housing and the people that we serve, we earned the voting for in favor of the fair housing frame law that will create more affordable housing for everyone and truly for our black and brown communities. Thank you.
My name is Carrie Butler. I'm with the Municipal Arts Society of New York. And we foster thoughtful, equitable planning and public participation in shaping our city. We appreciate that the Commission to strengthen local democracy has taken seriously the need to improve community planning, particularly in neighborhoods facing displacement. And we support your recommendation to strengthen planning in limited affordability areas. And require community boards to incorporate housing targets into their annual, sorry, forgot my class, annual statements of need. As a member of the Thriving Communities Coalition, MAS joins our partners in calling for the city council to vote on citywide and district level housing production targets for the capital budget to reflect support for these proposed levels. I'm sorry, should I go closer? Oh, I'm, I'm good. I'll just, I have to hold it. Sorry. Um, we also call for the capital budget to reflect support for these proposed levels, which is important. Aligning planning, budget and the land use decisions in this way is essential to creating a more accountable and equitable system. We also support attention to the 197A process and community-led rezoning efforts that are well-informed and help shape growth proactively. Requiring the Department of City Planning to assist in the creation and implementation of these local plans, especially as a way for districts to meet their housing obligations, would help make 197A planning more rigorous and effective part of our land use framework. When combined with binding targets under the fair housing framework, increased support for community boards and capital investments, this approach offers a comprehensive planning structure that can help the city meet its housing goals in a way that reflects both equity and local needs. MAS also supports efforts to make it easier for small and nonprofit developers to build affordable, missing middle housing. We support a reevaluation of the scope of projects that require the full, uniform land use review procedure. And we urge the city to evaluate whether projects that meet environmental requirements and are exempt from SICER, meaning fast track program, could also be exempt. However, MAS opposes fast tracking land use reviews based only on the intention of housing, as this could undermine the intention of people. Finally, if the goal is to increase housing supply, the city should focus on resourcing DCP to improve the pre-certification process and advancing reforms to the city environmental quality review process, not meeting public review. Thank you to the commission for your thoughtful work on further democratizing our energy processes, making progress on reforms that strengthen public engagement and equity.
Apologize for the technical difficulties, but you powered through. Ms. Cummings?
Hi, yeah. I'm going to echo what a lot of other folks have said. My name's Skylar Cummings. I work as the campaign manager for land use at Good Old Lower East Side. And so I'm here testifying on behalf of the organization and our members. Every day, we speak with folks who are looking for somewhere affordable to live or applying to programs to reduce costs so they can afford their rent. For years, we've seen mass displacement as access to affordable housing and resources have been squeezed from our neighborhood and our people, and effective, poor, long-term planning that lacks community leadership. So to address these issues, we must look from a citywide perspective that engages communities in intentional, robust and representative ways. As a coalition member, we are aligned with the Thriving Communities Coalition and still want to further push for meaningful community involvement that centers those most affected, being low-income, black and brown communities. So, goals, proposes, we tie the fair housing plan to future housing production in the city charter through requiring the city council to vote on citywide and community district level housing production targets every five years, which will allow meaningful engagement, district by district needs related to housing production, to, very importantly, require community boards to create local land use plans like that of 197A that detail how best to meet housing production targets, the hope being that the boards would provide a place of recourse for addressing housing production affordability and guidance for agencies from a standpoint of comprehensive planning. In 2017, when luxury development was proposed in our neighborhood, Community Board Three, our community board signed on to the Two Bridges Community Plan with local tenant groups. And this plan shows that people are ready and willing to do this and deserve to have further ownership. Third, to establish a ULER fast track that does not automatically receive city council vote for projects that meet housing production targets if they're 100% affordable or mixed income with affordable housing and in districts failing to meet their targets and facing low displacement risks, which is hugely important, that we do not cause further displacement. Tying this to the fair housing plan will ensure that there is a metric that establishes production that is deeply affordable as it relates to the area median income. Fourth, will require capital budget to detail how it correlates to the fair housing plan. And this will help address material issues for residents. And lastly, require the city to identify and incorporate these planning considerations in production and in neighborhoods to equitably invest. And too often, we know that investment does not reach communities dealing with some of the worst conditions, especially those related to climate change and things like other factors like food insecurity. And so we know that neighborhoods are not equitably carrying the implementation of affordable housing. And so we seek to rectify this in, in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a new commissioner who arrived. Introduce yourself. And if you're late, you have to buy dinner for everyone. They don't pay enough being commissioner here. But Mike Rasiyobo, appointed by Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reyno. Welcome. Any questions?
Ryan, I have a question for you. Tell Whitney I asked you a question. Do you support the commission's recommendations that strengthen fair housing framework by including a planning study in parts of the, parts of the city that has not produced enough housing or there's a housing shortage?
Definitely. I think specifically, that's why we're seeing a lot of displacement and also with the migrant crisis and like people looking for homes and like a lot of vexions. So we do support in a way that building and like studying the neighborhoods who haven't built, so we can create new opportunities for also like new young people to like staying in our communities.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you all for your testimony. We appreciate it. Our sixth panel will be Selena Sue, Katie Bordeaux, Bordenaro, and Okampo Yaya Kumi. Oh, and I'm sorry, Katie will be on Zoom. Apologies if my pronunciation was bad, but you'll have a chance to correct me.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. My name is Selena Sue. I speak as a public policy professor at CUNY, a public school parent, and as a volunteer researcher with the People's Plan NYC, a coalition of grassroots organizations and unions fighting for a city that provides dignity, care and justice for all New Yorkers. We're best known for our People's Budget Campaign. For the past few years, I've spent the last days of each summer not running around to buy back-to-school supplies, but instead joining other parent, public school parents to fight egregious budget cuts to libraries, parks, CUNY 3K education. While we've helped to win back some funding, the budget process remains opaque and undemocratic. We urge you to adopt four key reforms. First, restrict the mayor's empowerment power. The mayor can unilaterally withhold or delay funds even after the city council has approved the budget, undermining council authority and community priorities. Empowerment should only be allowed during declared financial emergencies with sign off from the council controller or IBO. And these should be made binding. Second, expand council power over budget modifications. Right now, mid-year budget changes can happen without a required council vote. Council should be required to vote on modifications with line item veto power to ensure that changes are negotiated and not unilaterally determined by the mayor. Third, expand budget transparency through budget function analysis. Many agencies use vague budget lines. I've tried to read the 500-page PDF. I can't figure it out. But I was ostensibly trained to do such things that make oversight nearly impossible. The charter should require detailed breakdowns of agency spending to track whether funds are being used as promised. Finally, reform revenue forecasting. Again and again, I hear from CUNY colleagues, from students, even neighbors, that they have no idea when to heed ominous warnings of fiscal cliffs. We support a consensus-based forecasting model that incorporates experts but are not calling for a consensus revenue estimate that might have unintended consequences like mid-year pegs or a less functional system. I'm grateful to that some of the People's Plan, People Plans proposals are already being considered by the commission. I'll be submitting written testimony along these lines. I urge the commission to adopt bold reforms that truly help to democratize our city budget. Regardless of whose mayor, the city council and, I dare say, even everyday New Yorkers should have a greater say in our budget priorities. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's Yaya Kumi.
Weenamajo, that means good evening, everyone. Okay, this testimony was addressed to Francisco X. Navarro, but I'm not going to read all that. It says, Dear Mr. Navarro, I am Okumpfo Yaya Ansakumi. I'm a registered voter. I'm a 63-plus-year-old priest of 45 years of the Akon people of Ghana, West Africa. I toured with the Dinyu African dancers, drummers and singers for 15 years, from May 1979 until November 1994, when I left the company to work as a traffic checker for MTA New York City Transit. I need your help with several situations. Firstly, I need a building to be appropriated for the dissemination of African traditions, culture and religion in general, and Akon traditions, culture and religion in particular, here in New York City with me at the helm. I need guidance in establishing my own non-for-profit organization with the aforementioned mission. Secondly, I need your help to get bus operator run number 807 on bus number 4401 of the Q40 bus line on Monday, June 2, 2025, at 1,505 hours. To be removed from his assignment and to be never be allowed a position dealing with the public within New York City for calling me evil, the devil, a racist, and saying, I plead the blood of Jesus against you repeatedly and very loudly for all the passengers to hear after I made a comment that he picked up a man wearing a blue turban at the corner of Lakewood and Sutton Boulevard. I told him that I was not prejudiced and apologized to the man and told him that I had nothing against him per se. After the driver let the man in the blue turban board the bus again through the back door, I responded to the driver, number 807, as loudly as he said to me, heat and cold coming together to destroy all evil. Anything my eyes do not see, anything my eyes do see, all bad people, all bad energy coming toward me. In moments prior to this incident, attempting to board bus number 4401 on the corner of Sutton Boulevard and Jamaica Avenue, the driver, number 807, closed the door in my face. There was room for me as well as for the other passengers he left on the sidewalk, who also desired to board bus number 4401. After boarding and paying my fare, I identified myself as a former employee of MTA New York City Transit Traffic Checking Operations number 23782 and said that he could have let the other passengers board the back of the bus. And if I were an employee of MTA New York City Transit, I shouldn't have said anything to him. And that we could discuss the situation with his supervisor.
Can you, your three minutes is up, so if you could just bring it to an end. You're welcome to give us any written testimony, which we can read after. You did. Okay, great. Okay. So we will be sure to read it. Thank you. We also have on Zoom, Ms. Bordenaro.
Very nice. The trick is not to, is to continue and say every letter, and I commend you. Hi, my name is Katie Bordenaro, and I'm the vice chair of the Land Use and Housing Committee of Manhattan Community Board Two. On June 18, 2025, CB2 Manhattan adopted a resolution in response to the 2025 New York City Charter Revision Commission convened by Mayor Eric Adams and the New York City Commission to Strengthen and the New York City Commission to Strengthen Local Democracy, this commission convened by the New York City Council. CB2 Manhattan has many criticisms of the mayor's commission, including an erosion into land, of input into land use decisions from the public, the community board, and our most local elected officials, city council members, and borough presidents. The creation of a new three-member panel to override city council land use decisions. An inaccurate portrayal of the U-Look pre-certification and approval periods. The reduction of the U-Look review process from 90 to 60 days. The recommendation to run concurrent public reviews at the community board and borough president levels. The introduction of undefined terms like "small projects." And the creation of a sketchily-defined new Office of Zoning Administration, as well as the weakening of the practice of member deference, which correctly draws on the expertise of the most local official, our city council member. We would like to work with the Commission on preventing the imposition of these changes, which reduce local input, this commission. CB2 Manhattan also noted and/or supported elements of the City Council Commission's report that we are discussing today and would like to offer support and suggestions to enact and enhance these proposals. Like other people testifying today, we noted this Commission's recommendations to explore the expansion of 197A rules. We were intrigued by this idea and recommend that this change would be more feasible if community boards were granted more resources to produce such a zoning plan. Moreover, community board term limits are an impediment to the continuity necessary to complete a years-long 197A plan where this commission explore the notion of giving the community board members more time to serve and complete these projects. This commission recommends increasing the number of votes on the City Planning Commission required to disapprove a land use action if the community board, the borough president, and the borough board all recommend approval of a land use action. CB2 Manhattan supports this proposal as it gives more weight to local input. Finally, based on our own long experience, we recommend that a process be put in place to examine the effectiveness of land, large land use actions, such as rezonings, to gather metrics on the net additions to the housing stock, the mix of residential versus office, and whether the stated goals of the land use action were ultimately successful. This sorely needed analysis would help guide communities in navigating future proposed land use actions. Could we discuss this further with you? Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Let me just look to see if there's any questions.
I'm sorry, Professor. I forgot your last name. Sue. You looked at budget units of appropriation. Particular sort of formula or limit, or what kind of guidelines would you recommend for units of appropriation to make it more transparent and understandable, especially for someone such as yourself who should, as you point out, be able to?
I would say that I focus on process, and so I, I'm not sure I have an answer for that so much as I would, I would say that even making it just more accessible and trackable in a way that sort of like the checkbook. And I've looked at this in other cities also. Look, look. That other cities such as Los Angeles, not Chicago, I think that they've talked about it, have more interactive and detailed city budgets that make it possible to track projects over time. I know that there has, there has been some city council legislation regarding that.
For people to look at as opposed to, you mentioned a PDF.
Yeah, that was one thing, but I think for the budget recommendation, for the transparency recommendations right now, I would just urge for also some city council oversight and the need to vote for, especially for empowerment powers.
Heard, heard that. Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other question? Okay. Thank you all for your testimony. We appreciate you taking the time. And then for Panel Seven, I think both participants are on Zoom. We have Jeremy Kaplan and John Leva. Kaplan.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, hi. I'm actually a Sunset Park resident. I'm on the community board and a, hold on a second. It says, ask you to start the video. Okay, yes. And I'm on actually the land use committee on CB7, but I'm not speaking for community board seven. There's a number of things that I'd like to say. First off, I think this process is incredibly confusing that there's two commissions. I did not know that that was the case. I came here thinking that we'll be discussing the mayoral commission. So I, I think that's incredibly important that even somebody who's attuned to these issues and land use issues, I had no idea that this is what the commission was, that there's a separate commission. I think that it was incredibly problematic last time, that last year, the hearings that took place, how few people showed up. Tonight is not very well-attended, and this is all of the borough of Brooklyn. So I think that's very problematic. I, I do think that in a lot of ways, the, some of the points that people echoed about the importance of city council members deference, and community voices, the 197A plan, those are all very good. I think one of the biggest things that we need to emphasize, though, is that community development should not be constrained to this notion of hitting metrics and targets and, and things that are basically decided by, you know, at the end of the day, quote, "experts." And, and I think it's incredibly frustrating that we're reducing the housing crisis, which is really a housing crisis of affordability, to this notion of like, if we meet some few metrics around what developers want to build. And the, the problem is what we've seen time and time again is that the housing crisis that we're in currently has been, every mayor has had metrics about building hundreds of thousands of units, and it hasn't actually changed. And we've looked at a lot of the neighborhoods that, quote, you know, went through rezonings and has dealt with, you know, neighborhoods like East New York that dealt with massive displacement. Further down for us in Sunset Park, or for Park Slope, we saw the rezoning that took place in Park Slope on Fourth Avenue that displaced and took out so much rent-stabilized apartments. So I think actually the real metrics that we should be looking at is actually rent-stabilized units and how many truly affordable, which should be 50% AMI or under, units are actually produced or brought back online, restabilized. Those are more important units than thinking about, we just built market-rate housing. Because building market-rate housing has actually furthered the causes of a lot of these issues. Where I think a lot of times we're proposing the same solutions that got us into this housing crisis. So I think that we actually should be looking at entirely different metrics. So I, you know, I, I think, I hope that you criticize the mayor's commission and some of the other proposals that the mayor has. But I also think that it's very flawed to think about this as, you know, unfair housing, to only think about it about housing units built versus actually affordable housing units.
Kaplan, your three minutes have wrapped up. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Leva.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is John Leva, and I live on the Columbia Street waterfront in Brooklyn. I'm here to speak in strong support of expanding community input and community power in land use decisions across New York City. For far too long, land use and planning decisions have been made with minimal input from the very people most affected, us. Local residents, working families, tenants, small business owners, essential workers, we are often treated as an afterthought. We are expected to react to plans that have already been drafted behind closed doors, and we are told that our voices matter only after key decisions have been made. That's not democracy. That's not planning with communities. That's planning around us. The current system privileges developers, lobbyists, and private interests, often at the expense of the public good. It allows real estate deals to move forward without meaningful transparency and accountability, and it enables projects that displace working-class communities, destroy cultural and historic landmarks, and deepen environmental and racial injustice. We need a new approach, one rooted in community self-determination. That means embedding community voices early in the process, not just after a U-Look application is certified, but when plans are being conceived. It means giving communities more than just a microphone. We need resources, training, and supports, especially in working-class immigrant and historically marginalized neighborhoods, to engage meaningful with land, meaningfully with land use decisions. It means creating new forms of governance where community boards and local coalitions have real power, not just advisory status. We know our neighborhoods. We know what we need to survive and thrive. Truly affordable housing, accessible public space, resilient infrastructure, and good local jobs. We don't need more luxury towers we can't afford. We don't need green-washed rezonings that fuel gentrification. We don't need to be told that this is for our benefit when we are the ones being pushed out. We need a system where the city listens to communities before decisions are made and where communities have the power to say no when a plan doesn't serve us. If the city wants to plan for growth, it needs to plan with the people, not for them. Let's build a planning process that builds people, that puts people over profit and democracy over deals. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to strengthening local democracy, but I would like to say one last thing. There's not, there's no urban planning going on in this city really right now. What we have is development plans, created by developers. There's no real urban planning where we need this in this community. Let's figure this out. It's just the developers see a way to make money, and then they put a proposal on how to, how to do that. We need to really get away from that. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Leva. And I have a question for you. If there was one thing you would like to change and see change, what would that be?
Wow. Just more like the political will and, and just to help, just to involve the community, for everybody to just, like, right now, I'm very involved with the BMTV development, which we have a big vote coming tomorrow. They're trying to use a GPP there instead of the U-Look, so not even the U-Look is good enough now. Now they want to circumvent the community totally. And it's just that, that people start seeing, the people here, that the people have the same powers as developers. How about that? I don't know if that's, that's not a policy thing, but that's just like the will that people, that we view the communities with, as the same respect that we have for, that they have for developers, I guess.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Nope. All right. Thank you for your testimony. And I would just like to thank all the folks that have given testimony today. We appreciate the time and the valuable insights that we've all received and you've shared with the Commission. Just a few announcements. I want to remind everyone that our final hearing is on Tuesday, July 1, at the Queens Public Library in Jamaica. As before, all hearings are from 5:00 to 7:00, and people are invited to testify either in person or via Zoom. Registration and further details on all hearings are on our website, www.thecommission.nycity. On the homepage, you'll also find a link to a short survey in which you can tell us what you think of the changes we're considering making to the Charter. We encourage you to share this survey with your friends, family, and community members so that we can hear from as many New Yorkers as possible. So I want to thank everyone who testified today and again, watched online or in person, and the Commission staff who helped organize this meeting. With that said, can I have a motion to adjourn? A second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes, and we adjourn. Thank you, everyone.